Time is 6:00 PM. Council of Denton now convenes in regular session. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Cheryl Murphy, pastor at Waco Denison.
Do I come on camera? Let us pray. Almighty God, we give thanks for this beautiful day in this North Texas area. We are thankful for those that are serving our community and those citizens that care so deeply that they have come to give their opinion, to give their blessing and their wisdom. So, Lord, may your Spirit be in this place this night, in the words, in the hearts, in the openness of spirit, where conversations can happen and your blessing is always upon them. Lord, we ask that you be with us tonight and that you continue to bless this wonderful community in which we all call home. Through Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible). United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. (Inaudible). (Inaudible).
Okay, we have one proclamation this evening, to which I'm going to read from the diad. We've already taken photos, but it's Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month and Ski Dancing with Texas Abate, correct?
That's right.
Is here, so you're welcome. Good to see you again. Proclamation of the City of Denton, Texas, whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country, and whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and therefore more prone to injury or death in a crash than any other vehicle drivers, and whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risk, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety, whereas it is the responsibility of all to put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling down the highways of this country, and whereas urging all citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle and for riders and motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect that they deserve, whereas I urge all residents to do their part to increase safety and awareness in our community. I, Jared Johnson, as mayor, on behalf of the City of Denton and our residents, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2018, as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in the City of Denton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank council members, thank you citizens of Denton. Every year I come up here and I hope to share good statistics with everyone. 2016 wasn't really a good year for statistics, not just for motorcycles. Our fatalities had increased 4.2 percent. Passenger vehicles' fatalities had increased 3.8 percent. A year ago pedestrians had the largest increase in fatalities. So, it's not just motorcycles that are affected by raising awareness in community. May is typically the month when lost states get on their motorcycle for the first time, you know, after cold winter and what have you. So, we like to bring awareness to the community, not just to watch out for motorcycles, but for pedestrians and passenger vehicles and everyone else. So, we appreciate you having us here today and we sure appreciate the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
(Applause).
Denison Item Number 2B, 27th Annual Achievement of Excellence in Libraries Award. Mr. Rex, I believe that's what you said. If I can get Kimberly Bone, our library director, and her staff to join me up here. I'm very proud to present, on behalf of the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association, our library staff with the Achievement of Excellence in Libraries Award. This is something that the Directors Association does every year, and out of the 550 libraries, public libraries in the state of Texas, fewer than 10% get this award, and this is at least three years in a row that we've got it. And it's very reflective of the staff that we have at our municipal library, our public library. Under Kimberly's direction, they've done a lot of great things, many things which continue to qualify them for this award. There's certain, there's actually 10 criteria that they have to meet. It includes serving the underserved, providing a lot of online resources, summer reading program, a lot of things that not the average library provide. So, we really have to go above and beyond to do this. So, I'm happy to present this to the library on behalf of the Municipal Library Directors Association.[326.62][326.62](Applause). Thank you for making Denton proud.
Thank you.
Did you get a picture, Kurt?
No.
Let's all get in here real quick.
One, two, three. Get the title here. One, two, three. Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do. Good. Denison Item 3, Consent Agenda.
May I look to print the consent agenda?
Second. Motion of Councilman Goss, that's the Councilman Spiegel, on behalf of I say an aye. Aye. Poked like sign. Motion carries. So, we're going to skip down to Agenda Item 5C and do that first on the agenda. It's Receiver Report, Hold a Discussion, Take Action on the Grayson County Thoroughfare Plan. We have Clay Barnett here, Director of Sherman Denton MPO. And I also want to recognize fellow boardroom with the MPO and the audience, Jennifer Majors in the back where we lie.[403.03][403.03](Laughter). All right. Clay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. Appreciate this opportunity to present an update on the Grayson County Thoroughfare Plan. Roughly one year ago, we started looking at how to be safely and conveniently transport people across our county, whether it be from Taco to Denton or Denton to Wybry. How do we do that in the most efficient manner? The way to do that was through a thoroughfare plan, come up with a plan, comprehensive plan for a transportation network that gets people across the county conveniently and effectively. Needed some funds to do that. We had $80,000 from the Sherman Denton MPO. We asked Grayson County to pitch in $80,000, City of Sherman to pitch in $40,000, and City of Denton to pitch in $20,000, and we appreciate your partnership on that. So, the contract was signed in July of last year with Cubitzollers, who is also doing your comprehensive master plan. Since that time, they have been looking at a number of different factors on the thoroughfare plan, some background work, including demographics and modeling, but we feel we are at a point today where we can bring this plan and give you a good update on it. So, with that, I will turn it over to our constituents with Cubitzollers, Ken Hughes, and Mike McAnally.
Thank you, Clay. Evening, Councilman Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to give you guys an update tonight. The, let's see.
Can I get two? The little corners on the bottom right there. Is this one? Okay, I'll get you a product there.
Perfect. Thank you. As Clay said, my name is Ken Hughes. Work for Cubitzoller. Got another team member tonight, with me, Mike McAnally. I'll be focusing more on the engineering aspects. Mike will be talking about the planning aspects. And so, as far as the project status, we've met with the technical advisory committee. We've seen how we provided them an update on demographics. They've provided us some comments. We'll be meeting with them week after next to present the updated numbers with them to get their approval. We made presentations to the City of Sherman here three weeks ago, collected comments from them, received comments from Denton here just last week, and we're in the process of incorporating all those. At this point, I'd like to turn over to Mike McAnally, and he can talk about the planning aspects of the project.
Thoroughfare planning is about the future transportation needs for Grayson County. It's a long-range comprehensive plan. We're looking out to conditions that are predicted out to the year 2050, but the horizon for thoroughfare planning really is forever. You've got to really take a long-range look at what are the needs for mobility and access well out beyond that 2050 year. If you look back and think about what our forbearers did when they settled the country, if they had not had the foresight to see the long-range needs, we'd have worse problems than we do today. The plan also is a tool for preserving future transportation corridors and maintaining rights of way necessary so that improvements can be done when they're needed, and it's a guide for public investment in infrastructure. Thoroughfare plan is looking at development of the roadway network. It's a tool for coordinating among cities. That's why we're here tonight. We're working with all of the cities in Grayson County to integrate their plans into the overall county master plan for thoroughfare development. It's a planning tool. It's going to need to be updated and maintained. Nobody has that perfect 2020 vision, so we recommend about every five to seven years the county consider any needed updates or revisions to the thoroughfare plan. It's a means of preserving the right-of-way corridors so that future roadway improvements can be done when they're needed. Your subdivision ordinance in the city is to already that right-of-way through dedication as development occurs. The thing is that it's not. It's not a bond program or a capital improvement program. It can be a guide for getting to those programs, but this is more just a long-range vision, comprehensive plan for that roadway development. Steady area includes all of Grayson County, 180 square miles, 17 municipalities, and all of the existing and future roadway developments within that area. Ken will talk a little bit about the city plans that we've considered in the process.
Thank you, Mike. When we got started on this, basically the thoroughfare plan process, we started with basically a map of the existing roadways within Grayson County. Then we overlaid the existing master thoroughfare plans for the communities Denton, Sherman, Howell, Van Elstein, and Yunder. Had those five cities, put those on the map, and started kind of connecting the dots. And what we're looking for is basically the ultimate build-out plan for Grayson County on all that. What we're looking at is basically the tollways, the freeways, principal arterials, major arterials, and minor arterials. As far as the typical sections, then on the principal arterials and the major arterials, they're both six-lane divided roadways. The difference between the two is the principal has a higher speed limit, more than the 50-plus mile an hour range. Will have deceleration lanes, right-turn lanes, so that way you can decelerate, make the right turn safely, and accelerate back on the roadway. As far as the minor arterial, before lane divided, no right-turn lanes, and no deceleration lanes. We also show a local street as far as a typical section, just two lanes. As far as the major roadways that we've come up with, as far as the major thoroughfares going south, we've got State Highway 160 on the east side, and US 69, 75, 289, Grayson County Tollway, and then 377 on the far west side. The east west, starting from the south, 121, 902, US 82, and then the Grayson County Tollway tied into Denton. We're in the process of collecting comments. Received comments from the City of Denton here this last week. Get those incorporated. We've collected comments from the other municipalities in the county, and we're in the process of taking our thoroughfare plan and putting it in the travel minim model, so that way we can model the traffic throughout the county. I don't think we look at it as different potential funding sources. There are, we kind of open into traditional funding sources and non-traditional. The traditional is like developer funding, where the developer divide, the property wants to provide access to it, and they're required to put in the roadway improvements. State or county bonds, vehicle registration fees, tolling with the Grayson County Tollway. Then there's also the federal funding through the TechDOT, various categories there. And there's a toll of categories. Some of the non-traditional tolling, like private developer, one of the projects we're working on is a firm, is a private tollway down in Cibola, Texas, outside of San Antonio, where developers actually putting money up front to provide that tollway. There's also congressional legislative priority funding, transportation reinvestment zones, roadway purchase, and so on. But there, some of the next steps, we'll be meeting with the TechDOT Parish District, meeting with the district engineer, Noel there, and then meeting with the TechDOT TPD Division, the transportation planning and programming, to look at different funding sources. And then, once we identify the projects, look through all that larger list of items and see what options we have there, what's best fit. At this point, I'd like to turn it back over to Clay, answer any questions you may have. We do have exhibits. Wasn't sure where to put it here. We're kind of a big crowd tonight, so.
We do have the map built, and you're free to have these. And we'd be happy to answer the questions.
So, Clay, I guess talk a little bit about the town where I'm completing it here, or maybe you could speak to that.
We're in the process, as far as the thoroughfare plan. Denton's actually the last on our kind of quote-unquote calling a road trip here, preventing our thoroughfare plan to the Sherman and Denton, to prevent it to the technical advisory committee. We get to go back there and get in a couple of weeks. We've had a briefing for the MPO Policy Board, so we're nearing the cliche on that phase of it. We do do some of our stuff.
I think we're still having some dialogue with planning staff here at the City of Denton, so. Once that's completed, we're looking for cities to adopt it, and I think it has to be adopted by ordinance in order for the city to acquire right-of-way as part of the planning process. But we are looking for cities to adopt it by ordinance probably sometime in the month and a half. We are going to provide a set of engineering design standards, both for arterial streets and then for smaller communities that can't afford to do it for local streets. We'll include that as well. Other questions at this point? And those maps are available electronic at the MPO website. They are available electronic at the MPO website.
Thank you all. If you'd invite the judge up, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I got a question. How you gonna pay for it? That's my question, right? This is quick. The mayor and the city manager I have met, you know, Grayson County has never taken the lead in transportation anywhere outside of certain roads, and so, as our county grows and, you know, and our county is growing on all facets, we've come up with what I think is through the MPO and working with the cities of primarily Sherman Denton at first, have a plan. I just want to share this with the council and let you know that tomorrow at 11 o'clock, you're welcome to do a workshop at the commissioner's court to talk about this plan. Basically, as you may be aware, TTC, Texas Traffic Administration Commission, allocated $167 million to Grayson County to fix two big projects. The Gap, which is the area from 1475 South and Sherman to 75, TechDOT Parkway, and then the Interstate 82 and 75, which is the biggest choke point in the parish district. That sounds great, right? But the pockets of this thing are this. None of us get in a traffic jam going up the Gap. It's pretty, it's pretty good, but in order for that, for us to ever have an interstate here in Grayson County, we've got to solve that problem. I'm going to dive into this in a moment, talk about Amazon. You probably got the question, what is Denton doing about getting Amazon here? Well, the answer is nothing, because Grayson County wasn't even in the conversation because they have no interstate here. So, the thought is that we can fund this project, become interstate centers all the way from Dallas to the Oklahoma border, but now that the ODOT and the Choctaws are bringing interstate center from the Red River to the Casino, now we have a true interstate conversation. We know that Denton has issues at 691 and 75 with 503 and 691. These projects were added to this list. So, basically, in a nutshell, you have the spine of Grayson County, 75 from the Gap, 82, 75 there to change, to the 691, 75 there to change that are part of this program. What you'll see happen is TechDOT funding the big chunk, the bulk of this with $167 million dollars. MPO dedicated $30 million to this project. The county of Grayson come in with about $21 million, and then each of the cities, both small and large, are going to be assupped with 5 percent. So, I don't have a bond from my bosses yet, those four people that sit around me, we're going to talk about tomorrow. So, if you have, if you know your county commissioner, give them a call and say you're supportive of this. We're going to talk about this tomorrow. And I hope that what comes out of this is a county-wide comprehensive plan that dovetails in with this thoroughfare plan, where we get some big projects done. And I will say this, the first project on the list to let 3910 be successful is the 503 bypass to 75. That is the number one project on the list, so we'll go from there. Mayor?
Thank you, Judge. And I just want to say, say that we spent hours being concerned with transportation issues over the last several years. We were spending a few hours when it was no money, then all of a sudden the state, the propositions to the voters have enabled a revenue source, we thought, and then it changes, and it changes, and it changes, and the funding is complicated, and it is very political, it's political at the state level, and our representative, Larry Phillips, has done a great job in advocating on our position, but our judge, he says the county has led the way, but it's really, he's led the way, as the judge, to advocate on transportation and really positioning Grayson County, which Denton will benefit from these upgrades, well ahead of it being too late. And so, do want to thank the judge for his leadership in that. It's been effective, and he's passionate about transportation, and Denton's been well-represented through that process.
Well, I appreciate that. I want to, I know that, you know, he's a lame duck right now, right? So, I do want to say this, off the side, part of the negotiations, you know, and as the former mayor, Sherman, I can speak to this, you know, you know all the wrong parts. I'm going to tell you right now, your mayor did the right thing regionally by taking some sacrifices for Denton's short term, and again, that plan was what, three plans ago, three years ago, but the bottom line, and this is the part, the biggest part of this, by all of us working together, guys, we're going to get some things happening in our communities that we wouldn't have otherwise. So, Mayor, I want to thank you as well for your support, and don't kid yourself, he's about as passionate as anybody comes to transportation. Red or not, guys, thank you for your time. Appreciate your attention.
Thank you, sir. On the floor. And we'll now go back to Agenda Item 4A, Public Hearings. Public hearing on unsafe structure posted at 3:26 West Day.
Good evening, Mayor Castle. Tonight we have four developments up before you. The first one is 3:26 West Day. On March 28, 2018, Angel Edmond Price and Rhonda Louise Cussey were given notice to repair and demolish the structure at 3:26 West Day. The owners have failed to comply with the notice. This structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 5, Article 8, Section 5-833, H, G, and N of the Denton Code Ordinance. This property is open, creating an attractive nuisance. It's not weather-tied. It's got some foundation issues. A record of the violations notices an unsafe condition of the property or on file in the building department. Staff is requesting council to declare this structure an unsafe structure and order its removal.
This is public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this, the Denison? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion with council.
Mr. Mayor, I move to declare this building unsafe and authorize the demolition.
Second. Have a motion from Councilman Goss, second from Councilman Beckall. If everybody say an aye. Aye. Poked like sign. Motion carries. Denison Item 4B, Public Hearings on Unsafe Structure Posted at 7:19. Martin Luther King, Ms. Wood.
On March 28, 2018, Amanda Campbell, Roscoe Smith Jr., the estate of Roscoe Smith, and the estate of Roscoe Smith Jr., I'm sorry, were given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure at 7:19. Martin Luther King. The owners have failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 5, Article 8, Section 5-833, G and F of the Denton Code Ordinance. This property has foundation issues. The porch cover on the other picture is starting to collapse. This property is on the tax road for $8,629, and the taxes were last paid in 2015. The balance due is 687. A record of the violations notices an unsafe condition of the property or on file in the building department. Staff is requesting council to declare this structure an unsafe structure and order its removal.
Okay, this is the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this, the Denison? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion with council. And a motion?
Mayor, I move to declare the structure at 9:18, West Johnson, a nuisance and unsafe. Order demolition and authorize staff to proceed with demolition process.
Second. It's 7:18.
I already skipped ahead. I apologize.
Second, second.
Correct, correct my motion.
Have a motion from Councilman Spiegel, second from Councilman Beckall. If everybody say an aye. Aye. Poked like sign. Motion carries. Denison Item 4C, Public Hearing on Unsafe Structure Posted at 9:18, West Johnson, Ms. Wood.
On March 28, 2018, Lola Fayran, the estate of Thomas H. Ray Jr., and the estate of Thomas H. Ren were given notice to repair or demolish the structure at 9:18, West Johnson. The owners have failed to comply with the notice. This structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 5, Article 8, Section 5-833, H, G, and N of the Denton Code Ordinance. This property is open, creating an attractive nuisance. It's not weather-tied. Foundation in the rear is failing. The property is on the tax road for $15,579. Taxes were last paid in 2017. A record of the violations notices an unsafe condition of the property or on file in the building department. Staff is requesting council to declare this structure an unsafe structure and order its removal.
This is the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this, the Denison? This is the board. Ms. Smith?
Hello, what do you mean?
Name and address, please, for the record.
Lola, Lola Smith, 220 Conti Drive. This is my husband David, and we did the 220 Conti Drive Arlington, Texas.
Yep.
Hi again. I hope we don't become best friends ever again. I did receive notice, and upon notice, I did try to clean up the property and everything. I have before and after pictures to show the work that I have started doing on the property. I initially went on April 2nd to the rider department to speak with, spoke with Robert Blake. At that time, he told me that, you know, he saw the work that I was doing in Michael Fitzfactory.
Can you pass the paper?
And the biggest problem with this residence is someone was dumping their trash, and it was the neighbor's next door because it was along their fence line. But I did, if you look at my pictures, you can see that I worked extensively to correct that problem. I really did. And I just want to be given the opportunity to invest and get it back up and going. That's why I come here tonight. As far as the back porch that she was talking about, it's like an add-on porch, and that was the only foundation issue that I did see. And I did have someone look at this property as well, when I was here on the other properties, and willing to take, put the investment in to get it, to get it back where it needs to be.
Are the taxes current?
They were paid in 2017. There's only one county, do you?
Okay. So, Ms. Smith, what is, so you live in Arlington? Right, okay. So, what is customary here, what we try to do is work with the property owner through the process to get him 10 days to pull a permit and six months to complete the work.
Yes, sir.
And what I would encourage you to do is that before you pull that permit, spend even $1 on the permit fee, is to visit with the chief building official to make sure you know what you have to do on the front end before you get into a project and realize it's too expensive to salvage. Because the reality is that in six months, when you're only a little bit done, then there's a good chance that it just gets demolished at that point, and then you wasted your time and money to do that. So, if it's the council's pleasure, that's what we typically do, 10 days to pull a permit, so it'd be 10 days from today, and then six months to complete the work. So, again, please visit, especially with you guys living out of town, and I don't know how often you're going to be able to be here, I just want you to... how, how often you're gonna be able to be here, I just want you to, to know it's, that's good. Okay?
I'm invested in it, so I wouldn't even be here, 'cause with that, I could have something in mind, so I'm invested in trying to make it work.
Okay. Just got a very personal.
Did I understand, did you all just buy this property?
No, I inherited.
You inherited, okay, okay.
Yes, and so I'm having to go through the process of getting everything revisited, you know, cleaned up and, you know, I'm working on one project, then we come to another.
Yes, yes.
But if you can see the work that I did do, I did that. I didn't pay anybody, I did that work.
All right, thank you all. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed, question from council? Discussion? And a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the owners be given two days to pull a permit and six months to complete the work on this project.
The, the motion should include that if it's not completed, if demolition in Grayson.
And if it's not completed in six months, the building will be demolished.
Thank you, Senator.
Have a motion from Councilwoman Goss, second from Councilwoman Doty, all in favor, everybody say a aye.
Aye.
All right, those like sign. Motion carries. All right, thank you all. Agenda item four D, uh, public hearing on unsafe structure posted at one zero one eight west Rice Street in Denison, Ms. Wood.
On March twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, Willie Stewart, Cooper Stewart, Sherry Bank, and Munson Munson Pearson Cardwell P.C. were given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure at ten eighteen west Rice. The owners have failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with chapter five, article eight, section five dash eight thirty-three, G, H, M, and N of the Denison Code Ordinance. The foundation is lagged on the panel, it's an attractive nuisance, it's open, it's not The property value is twelve thousand six fifty-nine, taxes were last paid in two thousand fifteen, and I think I have a little typo here, 'cause I, I have the balance due is two thousand fifteen, but. A record of the violations notices an unsafe condition of the property or on file in the building department. Staff is requesting council to declare the structure an unsafe structure and order its removal.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed, discussion with council? And a motion?
Mayor, I move to declare the structure at ten eighteen west Rice a nuisance and unsafe, order demolition, authorize staff to proceed with demolition process.
Second. Have a motion from Councilwoman Doty, second from Councilwoman Spiegel, all in favor, everybody say a aye.
Aye.
All right, those like sign. Motion carries, thank you, Betty. Agenda item five A, receipt of report, hold this gun, take action on ordinance granting conditional use permit for auto dealer using a commercial district, um, out of the James Main Survey, A seven eight one, four one through ones, out of Texel Parkway, Mr. Goss.
I'm not sure what's going on with our slides right now.
Um, it went crazy. Have you ever seen that one before?
We didn't do City Hall.
Good news. All right, so we need to remove this from the table, correct?
Yes.
So this item was tabled last week, so we need, I think, a motion to remove from the table? We'll do that.
Motion, council, remove from the table?
I move to remove this item from the table.
Second. Have a motion, Councilwoman Goss, second from Councilwoman Spiegel, all in favor, everybody say a aye.
Aye.
All right, those like sign. Motion carries, remove from the table, open, Mr. Goss.
Thank you. So this item, as you know, we held the public hearing for this item at the last city council meeting, the request is to grant a conditional use permit in a commercial zoning district. Uh, this is lots ten eleven Hunt subdivision, uh, this is better known as forty-one thirty-one South Texel Parkway, and it fixed itself, kind of. So the, as you can see, this property is under the red hot air balloon here, on South Texel Parkway. The property in its existing condition is mostly an existing asphalt parking pad with a small structure on it, looks like a home, but it would be used as an office in this case. The applicant is requesting a, that the conditional use permit that has expired on this property be re-approved for used auto sales. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the conditional use permit on the condition that there be additional landscaping and planting done on around the landscape of, or on the foundation of this building for some aesthetic purposes, and also if text off would approve of some additional planting to be placed, perhaps just right outside of the gate here to enhance that entryway a little bit. However, that would be subject to text off approval, if any plantings being in that, we believe that's text off right away, so it's really, and if they would approve that or not, otherwise we would not require that landscaping to be added there. So this is looking from the property, north towards the rest of the property, you can see, uh, this, there is an existing pole fence already, and so lighting, this is a property, adjacent residential property to the south of the subject property. This is the site plan that was submitted, so, uh, as you can see, the recommendations from Planning and Zoning Commission were this landscaping at this entry gate, and additional foundation landscaping around the office. The portion of the property is back away from Texel Parkway, remain undeveloped, and we did receive, uh, the planning department did receive one notice of opposition from a, from a property owner that are two hundred foot notification buffer. That one property owner does, uh, does add up to twenty-six percent of the land area that's in that two hundred foot buffer, so because of that opposition, city council does have to get a six out of seven vote in for approval in order to approve this conditional use permit. So with that, I'm going backwards now, so that, that is recommending approval of the item subject to conditions, uh, played out, recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission. Will stand for questions?
Any questions for Mr. Goss? I know the property owner's here as well, and Mr. Munson is representing.
On the opposition, Stephen, can you run us through what states may, was there a letter written? We did receive an email, I will take work here. Uh, most of the issues with the property, I believe, were from car alarms going off at three AM, and the property owner who lives next door not knowing who to contact to get those turned off. The letter included a couple of comments on maybe that people would come to the, come to the car lot and kind of cruise in order to case their property, whether that has merits, I'm not sure, but that was the, that was the reason proposition, mainly just, also the fact that there have been a few other car dealerships, used car dealerships in this location, and those have since just kind of cycled through and left the location. Those are mainly the issues. Now, in, with the approval of this conditional use permit, part of the certificate of occupancy for this would also be that they would need to add a screen fence on the south side of their property to screen from the residential adjacent, as part of our just typical zoning ordinance requirements, they would be required to do that. That's, those are the high points of the opposition. One more question, do you, you know, in your opinion, uh, do you feel that this is the highest and best use for that line? That's a very good question. Um, so in terms of highest and best use, honestly, I don't know that anyone can answer that question.
Then?
Uh, I can tell you, the city does not see any sales tax from auto sales, tire six point two five percent goes to state, right? Um, I don't believe the city sees any inventory tax on inventory that's held in a car dealership used or new. However, I, I would say any use is better than vacant property, sure, however, this is Texel Parkway, this is one of the gateways into the city of Denison, this is a major thoroughfare in Denison from the south. Being, that being as it, as it is, I do believe the council would like to raise the bar, so to speak, for Texel Parkway, for a gateway, for a major thoroughfare. If this is in our opinion to do so, I don't know if it's that if you're desired. Last question, in the notification zone, were two new residents on Texel Parkway, both the glass companies that recently, one's not resident there yet, the other one has built and has taken occupancy, were either of them in the notification zone? No, sir. Our notification zone is two hundred feet, so essentially, we've been a lap up here, actually, you would have. So as you can see, that two hundred feet really doesn't go very far, we didn't draw the buffer on.
Right.
So I, actually, I'm glad to, Lindsey Glass is in the notification area.
No, there's not Lindsey, they're on Lindsey Glass.
No, they're back, they're back to the south.
That's Bats.
Bats ABR. So, uh, we did receive a letter of support from Mr. Bats, however, that still isn't overriding the twenty percent, sure, so essentially, it only really caught this property in the north and this property in the south. There are two properties that are going to be for, but.
Question? Um, Mr. Munson, did, can you come forward, please? I think, I think last time, did you say that the pipe fence was also being painted?
That's the plan.
Okay.
Um, John Munson, I'm in eleven twenty-seven west corner of this facility, which is probably the nicest car lot in Duane, um, North Armstrong, and six ninety-one, and I'm talking about the paving, the building, central paint and air, the pipe rail fence, the lighting, it's nicer than any of the parking lot, uh, car lot down there, and, you know, I'm in the business of trying to make something better, okay? And we've done, um, you know, we've put a test paint job on the gate, uh, with the selected color of the tenant, cleaned up, pulled a bunch of rotten lumber, trimmed all the bushes around, uh, the building, gone through and done, start up on the building in terms of the things, we normally do, check all the lighting and so forth. Uh, probably went into this not having any idea how to be going through these meetings on what seemed to be an accepted normal use to it. Then the lady that's gone through her state permits, couldn't get an occupancy, so, the reason being is it just been painted for six months, you gotta start all over again. But, uh, I'm really not gonna have anything to do with it unless it's kept right, and it wasn't right. I probably spent a thousand dollars putting this, getting it painted, shaved up, and, uh, I think that's a positive move. I did the site location on Bats Auto, um, for whatever reason, at the time, he didn't choose to comment on it, uh, I've just talked, and he's very pleased with where he is. He is pleased that we're doing what I call an upgrade on something that was the nicest one, okay? So I think we're going in the right direction. I had visited, uh, with, uh, your P and Z, and, uh, had a little trouble understanding, but you do know that you could put, and we had one call at a point in time on the slot for portable, portable buildings. Don't have to get any approval to do that. You know, pretty bad with portable buildings. You can do trailer sales with them on. I'm talking about, if you go to Al, you see just what could be there on the north end of Al at nine oh two. So, a little puzzle, what the difference is in a car lot, I can understand alarms going off and things like that, but the intent here is to do something that's a plus and not a negative. And I think if you went and inspected it today, it's dramatically improved in terms of appearance, and that's a, that's a big part of the game, the, uh, the lady that leased it and I perhaps bear some fault in not having her, uh, check with the code in terms of the zoning issues, 'cause that looks like car lot, okay? Why, why isn't it used as car lot? Okay. Well, she's been paying rent and deposit starting January first, going through her approval of the switch in state, and, um, we're still working on it, try to get the necessary steps completed, so that we can finish paying the pipe rail fence.
I think we under, I think we understand where, where you're there at. Um, so Julie, to, the, the council can add a, a condition to what zoning is already done, if we wanted to make, just make sure that the pipe fence gets painted, we could add that as an additional condition?
Yes.
Okay. All right, discussion from council, thank you. I, I think they, they obviously have good intentions of doing the pipe fence, we just, I think, in my opinion, we could include that as a condition. Discussion from council?
And on the motion?
I move to approve the ordinance granting a conditional use permit for auto dealer in the commercial district for point nine one acres out of the James Main Survey, A seven eight one, being a part of lots ten eleven Hunt subdivision, forty-one, forty-one thirty-one South Texel, subject to following conditions, the applicant provide additional landscaping around the foundation of existing building, the applicant provide landscaping at the driveway entrance, subject to approval of text dot and painting of the pipe fence around the property.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilwoman Becca, second from Councilwoman Goss, all in favor, everybody say a aye.
Aye.
All right, those like sign. Motion carries, agenda item five B, receipt of report, hold this gun, take action on resolution authorizing city manager to waive or dismiss city interest, mowing leasings under certain, uh, circumstances, Mr. Rex.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Uh, we've increasingly seen activity for mowing lien releases, which is a good thing, that means that we have revenue coming in to help recover some of those costs that we've expended, mowing lawns, uh, on vacant properties in the past, and just to give you an example, um, in two thousand and fifteen, we had eleven thousand dollars in revenue from mowing lien releases, uh, this last fiscal year, we have forty-seven thousand dollars. So there's a lot of property turning over, and so we're starting to capture some of that, that money that we spent in the past decades, really, um, on, on mowing leasings. So, so far this fiscal year, we're up to about thirty-three thousand dollars, so lots of property activity, um, folks are trying to buy and sell lots, especially down in the middle lots, that's a good thing for the city, we're seeing a lot of homes available, which is what we want. So, a common scenario we have is that, um, a property owner is, is under contract to sell the property to a builder, and, uh, since they didn't do a title search, either they inherited the property and they, or they just bought it sight unseen, they didn't do a title search, so they, they see that there's five or six thousand dollars worth of mowing leasings on the property from the last couple of decades. So we, we generally try to work with them on a case-by-case basis, we, we'd like a policy in place now that just gives us some, um, some, uh, a clear policy and clear guidance on what we can authorize and kind of speed things up, get the property built on and, and back into productive use. So, uh, what the policy includes is a, um, a provision that if, if the mowing leasings on the property exceed fifty percent of the tax value, uh, that we, the staff can reduce that, those mowing leasings down to fifty percent of tax value for the current tax year, and then at least we recover some of those costs and get the property put back to productive use in terms of getting that, getting a house built on it. There's oftentimes back taxes, uh, when that's the case, and they exceed fifty percent of the value as well, uh, we'll just go ahead and waive those, uh, waive those mowing leasings because more likely that's gonna go to a sheriff's sale, and, and those are gonna get wiped out anyway. Uh, the, the last scenario really is with our affordable housing program, as folks come into that program, we've waived those, those mowing leasings as well. So, this'll save time, uh, not having to, to bring each of these actions to council, and give us the opportunity to kind of expedite things and get those, get those locks back to productive use. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions from the manager?
So is this something that's, that they, they'd have to apply to get that reduction, or is it gonna just be automatically, I mean?
Uh, they'll, they'll have to apply, so, um, to get that reduction, they'll have to show a, a current property, uh, real estate contract so that it's for sale, and the builder who's gonna actually build on it has to commit to do that within twenty-four months. So we, we don't wanna just blanket reduce them, this'll only be properties that are under, uh, for sale, under contract, and they, they wanna be put to productive use, get a house built on them, is what we wanna see happen.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to waive and release the city's interest in mowing leasings under certain circumstances.
Second item.
Who was the second?
Motion from Councilwoman Goss, second from Councilwoman Spiegel, all in favor, everybody say a aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Council now go into executive session. So in chapter five five one of the Texas General Code, to talk with the city attorney and discuss moving litigation seven fifty west Sears, also the verbal attorneys, the city's project intent on one, discuss progress under objective law development agreement. Time is six fifty one.